Good afternoon. Thank you all for attending the Monday, September 9th Davis County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. Invocation, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Watford.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bow with me if you will. Dear Heavenly Father, the Psalmist said that if we desire wisdom, we need to read and internalize scripture and to meditate on its teachings and precepts. You love us, God, and you desire to instruct us. We seek your wisdom first, but also, Father, teach us to listen to wise advice from others and never to neglect godly instruction from the counselors you sent into our lives. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Flag it over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further, can I get a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner McClure and Commissioner Elliott?
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we got that out of the way, Debbie.
Thank you.
Recognitions, Mr. Shores would do the...
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any military veterans with us today? Any veterans?
None, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Register for public address. If you hadn't done so, there's a sheet here to sign up, public address. You can do that while we go further with the adoption of the agenda, so. So everybody looked over the agenda? Any additions?
No, sir.
Okay, hear none.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are we going to do these on our clickers?
Well, we might go from here on the clickers, how about that?
You want this on there?
I've got most everyone in.
Then we'll go from there, because I heard you all learned something new while I hadn't, while I've been out, so.
Okay.
You got all the votes?
I have all of them.
I'm sure those carried, so.
Yes, that's...
I don't see no opposition. Yep. All right, is anybody on there for public address?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, good deal. All right, so now we'll move on to item 7A, public hearing.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
We're here tonight for a public hearing, it's our annual public hearing for our grant application period, which is always, this time of year, the applications are due to NCDOT the 1st of October, so we appreciate you holding the hearing for us tonight. Several grants that will be part of the hearing is the 5311 Community Transportation Grant that takes care of our administrative costs, salaries for our office staff. Also, the 5310 Enhanced Mobility Program, which is a purchase, purchase of transportation service for senior services. And then Meredith Klimmer, who works for me, and she's the transportation coordinator over there, will come and talk about that briefly. Additional grants that will be on there tonight for the public hearing is combined capital, which allows us to replace buses that serve their useful life. We have two for the 2026 grant that has reached its mileage threshold. And then, even though we're not submitting any 5307 grants at this time, but we're having the hearing for that too, and that's the urban funding from Thomasville from H- High Point MPO, and then Winston-Salem for our urban funding for Lexington for the deviated fixed routes, and we'll apply for those at a later time. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Richard?
I just have one, Richard, I know we had an issue at one time, then it got better. Are we getting our funding that, that you're supposed to be getting now in a timely manner?
Yeah, for Winston-Salem?
Yes, sir.
We are. Now that we're direct recipients to the FTA for future funding through them, and we have some, a split letter coming that will apply directly through the FTA, and we'll get those money directly from now, we won't go through Winston for the urban grants. The 5310 grant will still go, there's still a small amount of money that senior services gets from, for the 5310 from Winston-Salem, and that will continue to be managed through them and not through direct recipient. Thank you, sir.
Do you have a question?
Do you have, correct me, because I'm trying to remember, was not one of those grants a contributor to the workshop of Davidson County at one time?
Still, our work, the workshop of Davidson County and the Life Center in Davis County, they both apply for their own 5310 funding.
Okay.
And they do their own public hearing for their, for their portion. We do interlocal agreements with them, so we kind of oversee the contractor, contractors for them.
Okay, I need some...
They use our contractors.
Yeah.
And we oversee that part, and we help them any way we can. If they, if we applied, from the Transportation Department applied for 5310 funding, it would be a 50-50 grant. If senior services, workshops, Life Center do their own, it's a 90-10.
Okay.
So it just makes sense.
Okay.
To have them do their own, more, more federal money instead of less local money.
Thank you, Rich.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Richard, if you will, have a seat on the front row in case we get any more...
Meredith Klimmer, have to say a couple of words.
Good evening, I'm Meredith Klimmer, the senior transportation coordinator, so I'm just here to speak on behalf of them. We've got two guests back here with us, they are clients with us, two of the many, I take like 30 appointments a day, so we've got plenty of clients with varying need, whether physically or financially, even for the nutrition programs, we provide transportation to those throughout Davidson County, so that's also a great need, so we're really grateful for the program, and I'm honored to be a part of it. So, do you have any questions for me?
I don't, does anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna call, declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against these grants, please come forward. How are you this afternoon?
All right.
Good.
I'm Joanna Grant, and I ride the transportation bus, and I think it's a good thing, because a whole lot of us, you know, don't have transportation, and we really need it to go into the doctors and stuff, so I think we really need it. I'm nervous.
No need to be nervous.
Yeah, I hear, yep, so, we really need it.
All right, thank you very much for coming up and speaking, okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of these grants? The second person must be nervous for sure, I don't see them getting up at all. Okay, see you none, I'm gonna close this public hearing. Any other discussion by the board? Can I get a motion and to approve?
I make a motion to approve submission of the grant application at the appropriate times.
We have a motion.
I second that.
And a second. Now I get to try the new technology. See if that works, Debbie.
All right, votes are in. And that motion carries 5-0.
Good deal. I think it looks a lot like it did two weeks ago when I was here, but I don't remember that. All right, item number eight, public hearing, Project Arugula, Economic Development Building Reuse Grant, Mr. Walser, are you gonna start this off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Project Arugula is a company that presently does, presently does not have a presence in Davidson County or North Carolina, so this will be a new company to our state and specifically to Davidson County. They are proposing to invest almost $3.2 million over the next three years and create 22 full-time jobs. The North Carolina Department of Commerce has proposed $140,000 building reuse grant to assist them with the outfit of the building, and in return, the county would be required to provide a 5% match, which would be $7,000 in this case. We have submitted the grant application to the state. The next phase for the state would be on October 17th for the Rural Infrastructure Authority to officially approve that funding, and then the governor's office would make, would have a press release that would officially release the name of the company. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Walser? Okay, if you don't mind, have a seat on the front row, and we may have some shortly. I declare this public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition, please make your way to the front. See you none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there any further questions by the board?
I have a question for Mr. Smith.
Okay.
Casey, the $7,000 match he was referring to, can that somehow or another be worked out as a part of the incentive agreement?
This won't be an incentive agreement, because this is one of those building reuse grants.
But they don't have to come back and forth in incentive agreement, correct?
To my knowledge, they're not asking for that at this time, so this is just to rehab the building, but we would go in the Economic Development Reserve to do that, because the match is typically to cover the grant administration piece. This is, if you read the proposal or saw through it, this is one of Siemens', this is a company that's closely affiliated with Siemens, so, and I also checked with Michael, you know, they are not located in the city, they're located in the county, but they're gonna rehab a building, so at this time, we haven't had any requests for any incentives on the jobs or the investment.
And if that occurs, we can take that up as...
We do that separate, right, if it ever comes to pass.
All right. Oh, and if nobody else has any questions, I'll entertain a motion and a second for this item.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, that we approve Project Arugula.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your vote, please.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote of 5-0.
All right, good deal. Good afternoon, thank you. All right, moving on to 7C, text amendment to the zoning ordinance, request by Davidson County Planning and Zoning Board to add Event Center as a new use. Mr. Krug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a request by Davidson County Planning Board to amend the Davidson County zoning ordinance amendments may include but not be limited to adding Event Center as a new use in Article 3, permitted in conditional zoning districts, section nine, excuse me, section 3.9, table of permitted uses as a use by right, comma with a use by development standards, and as a special use permit. Article 5, special uses, section 5.8, requirements for individual special uses may be amended by adding specific requirements for the event center use. Article 6, development standards, section 6.1, standards for permitted uses may be amended by adding development standards for the event center use. Article 9, definitions, section 9.2, may be amended by adding definition of event center use. Mr. Chairman and board members, what this is from is staff requested, we're getting inundated with people asking, how do I create an event center in Davidson County? This is something that's been gaining popularity probably over the last seven to 10 years, and the way the ordinance handles it now, it's cumbersome, and it's not really, we're trying to somewhat fit a round peg into a square hole. We're having to rezone areas that don't really need to be rezoned and create commercial and industrial districts where they really shouldn't be located. So, what we asked, we asked the planning board to initiate this, and what it boils down to is we would, and what you see in your packet tonight is a number of workshops that we've had with the planning board. I know this is kind of the first time you folks are seeing this, but this is a number of workshops, and what the planning board with our, with our input, wanted to create a new use called Event Center. If you would please direct your attention to the, to the overhead. This is kind of our, you've heard me say over the years, the backbone of our ordinance, this is the table of permitted uses. This tells you what the zoning districts are, and it lists specific uses here on the left side. We would ask for the new use of Event Center, and we want to create this use in several different districts and several different approval processes. What this does is, you see the X's, that's allowed use by right, all you have to do is pull technical permits through the central permitting office, and those uses can, can be placed in the associated districts. You see the D's, those uses, you have to provide staff development standards, certain things that are quantitative, that there's no, you know, that nothing subjective about them, they're, they're quantitative and we can measure those. You supply those pieces of information, and then those are approved in the associated zoning districts, and then we've got some special use permit, Class B, mainly if you'll notice in these residential districts. So what we're proposing is that Event Centers be approved by special use permit, Class B in the RA 1, 2, and 3. We are recommending, and when I say we, it's staff and the planning board, recommending that an Event Center be allowed by development standards in CS, highway commercial, MXR and MXC, and then an Event Center be allowed by right in both the LI and HI. Somebody wants to refurb an old industrial building or something, those areas are used to the effects that, that an Event Center might create. We've got a few examples in the county, and we've, we've learned a little bit over the years, that the main, the main use, the main, the main impacts these uses have on any area is traffic and noise. You know, there's high peak traffic times, and then there's noise issues that come from these. What's designed in these specific special use standards, the development standards, are ways to kind of mitigate those, those impacts. Moving on, this page here is what an applicant would have to submit to staff to apply for a special use permit. They'd have to have a site plan showing existing facilities, locations, design, proposed facilities of operation, they'd have to submit a DOT driveway permit, and number three, if the Event Center has any outdoor equipment that creates noise or has an outdoor venue, they'd have to submit a sound study showing what the decibel level of the proposed sound would be at the property lines. If it's gonna be something that's completely enclosed and has no exterior speakers or anything like it, somebody designs a structure to completely contain something, they don't have to do that. So, and then, and please interrupt, ask questions...
Yeah, let me ask you a question on that sound study.
Yes, sir.
Instead of a sound study, could we not just put something as a certain decibel point at the property line that can't exceed that? Because the sound study could be expensive.
It can.
And it don't really matter what your sound study says three months down the road when somebody sets two more big PV speakers outside and...
Right.
And blasts as the neighbors.
I agree with that, yeah.
If we've got something predefined, that it just, that it can't exceed at the, at the property lines.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's, yeah, that's something we could probably, because we can, we can still manipulate this how, to, you know, the extent that the board's comfortable with it.
Because what we're doing with the sound study is just approving it, that at that time, that that sound study said that.
Right, right.
But again, six months later, when they add another music venue or do something outside, then now all that changes, and we've already gave them the approval already.
Well, I think, you know, with a, with a special use permit, I think the intent there, and this is a good idea, the intent there was the sound study would show that decibel level, and that would probably become a condition of the special use permit that you couldn't exceed that. So, and then you, the board, it would have been the Board of Adjustment's job to gauge that compared to other noise levels of certain things, lawnmowers, tractors, weed eaters, that kind of thing. But if, if, if the board's more comfortable setting a, you know...
I'd say we just set a predefined...
70 decibels or something like that. We can do a little bit of research and bring that back to the board and, and, you know, give you kind of a spectrum of what equipment that people are familiar with, the levels that those, that the, levels, levels of noise, excuse me, that those create.
Right, formidable.
I think we could, I think we could get piggybacking on that, I think we could get in a situation where Todd's decibel level is 90, and mine winds up being 96, and he says, well, why can't he have his music louder than mine? So this, this would just eliminate all of that.
Okay.
Are you all okay with that, setting a level?
Yeah, and it makes sense, because at what point do you establish the decibel level of the owner property? It's gotta be at the perimeter.
Right, that would, yeah.
That would make a...
The intent, and I'm going off the conversation we had with the planning board, I think the decibel level would be set at that meeting by the board, the intent of that rule was the decibel level would have been set at the Board of Adjustment meeting, and if it was gonna, if the sound study showed that it was too high, they were gonna have to reduce it to a reasonable level. Kind of the same process we're talking about going through before approval, the, the Board of Adjustment would have that same, you know, process of, you know, 90 decibels is too loud, you're gonna have to reduce that, you're gonna have to perform some, something to reduce that, that sound noise, that sound level.
Well, the study would have to be done, or the way we're gonna do it, either one, that'd be done at the closest property line, the nearest property line.
Yeah, it's, it's shown as all, but the closest would be included in that, yes, sir.
I would say.
Oh, yeah.
It would probably work, just thinking that land.
Should it reset decibel level?
Sure.
Because that would fuck it up to discretion.
That's not up, that's not unprecedented in the ordinance, I know there's some decibel levels with extraction of earth products, there's some decibel levels of indoor spiring ranges, so we could, we could do that, that wouldn't be no problem, if you want us to do some research and try to figure out what would be reasonable, because there's some, there's some other setbacks, the, the board decided 10 acre minimum was gonna be, and keep in mind, these are just in residential areas, okay? The, the commercial and industrial get a lot smaller, but in residential areas where you've got your homes and they're out there, it's residentially zoned, those folks are looking for protection of any effect from adjoining property. are looking for protection of, of any, uh, effect from adjoining properties that might disturb the quiet enjoyment of, of what they've spent their money on. They've come to ten acres would be the minimum, and I think there was a three hundred foot setback, and there was, have to be some foliage somewhere in that three hundred foot setback to, uh, to muffle or, um, you know, kind of abate the sound as best as possible.
Does this just apply to, that centers established after the implement, after implementing, it doesn't grant, that was a grandfather then, correct?
That, that is accurate, sir.
So it's three hundred foot, is that typical?
Well, we, the only way to abate noise is distance and foliage, that's, that's really the only way to take care of it. You could do some things if it's in a structure with, with sound deadening materials. So, that, that number was used because everybody's kind of comfortable with three hundred foot, they know that's a football field. They can associate that in their mind with, with, and that, that does, that's a reasonable distance to get the sound levels down to, um, you know, a level that, that folks can still enjoy their homes next door potentially.
So is that three hundred feet from the structure or three hundred feet from the...
The, um, the Event Center, all ceremonial areas and parking associated with the proposed Event Center shall be setback from the prop, from all property lines, three hundred feet.
And if you're doing the parking lot, three hundred feet, that's a long ways away, huh?
Yeah, everything, with the ten acre track, everything in the mind of the planning board was, uh, they wanted it offset at the property lines of a football field.
See how that works, maybe? I mean, you might be limiting yourself so far away for, I mean, if you can't park within three hundred feet of the property line too, that takes a lot of property.
Sure.
To do this, uh, Event Center, it's according to how the ten acres is laid out, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I guess you, you can try it for a little while and see. I mean, I don't wanna shut it down, period.
Okay, okay.
You understand what I'm saying by making the rules so difficult, but...
Sure, sure. You know, we, we've learned with certain instances in the county, what, what issues have popped up, and, and I know that y'all's phones have probably rang some too with respect to these things, and that's, that's the attempt we're trying to make to, to take care of it.
And my phone has rang on some, but the problem is the residence is like thirty foot away, you know?
Sure, absolutely.
So, that's a big difference there, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The, the deal with the parking lot could very well be, if you set it that far back, it could be they moved the actual noise nuisances in the middle of the parking lot, how would they event in the middle of a parking lot? Which would get closer to the road, so that might be something that takes consideration when you're, we're talking about the parking lot area.
I'm just saying, you probably, your property would have to be at least seven hundred foot wide.
Yes.
Well, it'd have to be wider than that, because now you gotta make room for the parking.
Right, you're right.
You know?
Yeah, to, to accommodate everything, the structure, the, the parcel would need to be at least six hundred plus whatever the parking and the dimension are.
Right.
Exactly.
So that probably had to be eight hundred feet wide, just to accommodate something right in the middle.
Could be, yeah.
For parking, according to how big the Event Center was, but anyhow, y'all, y'all throw some numbers around and look, and like I say, you may have to adjust this, uh,
Sure.
ordinance if it's too strenuous or we see something that might work, but it's a little under the three hundred feet. I don't know what y'all's thought is on that.
I, I, I just, uh, I know that Thomas, of course, it's in the city and everything's a lot closer there, but they had some issues with a, with an Event Center that they didn't think that they were gonna have, and then they wound up having to go back and, and completely redo it. So, that's why, number one, I think that that decibel number being a constant for everybody is, is a good thing, and then these setbacks, like the chairman said, need to, we need to figure out what's best there.
What I'm, what I'm kinda hearing is that we're not so worried about the parking, because that's not the noise creation, but the, you want, the, the three hundred foot for the point of noise seems to be okay with everybody, but we may wanna relax the parking a little.
Really, I'm more concerned about the decimals. If you can meet your decimals, I don't really care.
How big or...
What you do inside of that, if you meet the decimals.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, I don't care if it's three hundred feet total, as long as you don't, as long as you meet those decimals on the sidelines.
Right.
That looks like what we're trying to accomplish, right?
Yes.
What the biggest complaint has been.
That's the, the most things that's, that's had people calling.
Oh, yeah.
So, to ever how they could achieve those decimals, I'd be good with whatever, as long as they meet those decimals.
Okay, we'll do some research on the decibel levels and, and come back to the board with kind of a, a spectrum, and then we can kind of set that, and, uh, you know, delete, if you want us to delete some of these, the, the three hundred feet for the parking, so you, you wanna kind of leave that, um, ambiguous based on, uh, I guess, a case-by-case basis, because eight hundred foot's a big piece of property, it's a very wide piece of property. You know, we, we have something similar with the wireless telecommunications tower applications, they have to meet three hundred and fifty feet, uh, from the, any property line. And I, I know that that's, um, that's not something that's easy to accomplish, because the way properties are, are cut up, there's, there's not a lot of them that way, so.
Yeah, like I say, I mean, I'm more concerned with the decimals and,
Sure.
You know, again, how something lays out and what it looks like, and, you know, where people's trying to put these places, it may, they may not have that, but it may be a beautiful place for an Event Center, like an old barn or something, you know, but...
Right.
But, but the position or the place where the parking is, it seems like to me might offer some kind of a noise situation if it's too close to the, to the neighbors, you know, when you're in a residential area. You might have to, I don't know, that's something we might have to think about too, how close it is to the building or how far it is away from the, the neighbors' homes. Uh, I don't know.
We, we do have some language in here that speaks to a twenty-five foot vegetative buffer, but it only speaks to the Event Center, it doesn't speak to the parking.
Parking.
So, and it's, it's a, it's a very good point in that, you know, if you live in a house next door, even though the, the, you know, the decibel levels may not be that high, if you've got cars shining lights in your, in your back window, you know, during those peak times when people are arriving and people leaving, that could be a nuisance as well, so.
Hey, I mean, I'd be okay with a buffer or something twenty-five feet down the property line. I think y'all remember, y'all let somebody put a boat ramp right next to my property down at the lake, and there was nothing, nobody could do about it, so I had to put a fence up myself to, but we had people coming in and out all night long with, with boats, you know, and you're talking about a nuisance, I mean, that's right there beside, it's within twenty feet, you know?
Yeah, I, I think that was part of a subdivision.
Right, right, it's part of the subdivision, but, you know, I got stuck with a boat ramp next to my lot, and again, I'm okay with it, it's just,
Yeah, yes, sir.
You've got traffic in and out, so, you know, stuff like that happens, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But I would be good with a twenty-five foot vegetation buffer or something myself, and again, I don't think you're gonna hear a whole lot of cars unless somebody's got a loud, you know, I mean,
My fur.
Right. If you got somebody like that ripping and rolling, but,
But you might.
Most of the time, hopefully, in these Event Centers.
I say have a motorcycle ride.
Well, you're right, you're right, so. And it don't matter about the vegetation there, you still gonna hear it.
That could get real loud.
That, that can, yeah, they like the pipes.
Just, just do your best, sir, and we'll...
If, if the board will indulge, the, the next, we'll amend that and bring it back. I'd like to go through the, uh, the development standard section, which is, um, right here. If it's located in highway commercial or community shopping, they would have to meet these, these rules, which are, which are very relaxed from the special use set. Driveway permit would be required, setbacks and screening. This has Event Center-associated ceremonial, uh, parking areas setback a hundred feet. It also has a, a twenty-five foot wide vegetative buffer, can be planted or conserved. You can reduce the hundred foot setback to fifty if you have fifty foot of trees, um, and it, it's got some standard language that speaks to, the Event Center should not be operated to constitute nuisance, noise, odor, dust, uh, vibration or traffic. So they would have to submit on a site plan or in documentation form to staff these, these findings here in front of you in order to pull permits for the, an Event Center in those commercial districts. How's, how's the board feel about that?
Um, this is more stringent than our regular commercial district, is it not?
Well, it's, um...
This is requiring them to do more than they would have to do in just a, I thought we relaxed some of those, uh...
Well, it's, it's, it's specific to the individual use. Every, every individual use with development standards has its own set of development guidelines that they have to submit. This, this was, um, this was created just to try to, you know, sometimes commercial, people living in, in close proximity to commercial areas are a little bit more used to noise, they're a little bit more used to lights, um, that, that the board moved away from the, the decibel level at, at this, with this section, and just wanted to create kind of an offset, and it does speak a hundred foot when next to residential uses. There, there is no offset between commercial, if it's, you know, surrounded by commercial, those, uh, standards do not apply. So you basically, you just have to meet the standard setback for that commercial district if you did not have any residential uses around you. These are triggered if you're next door to residential zoning and residential uses.
So is this what we require now for, say, if we was going to, um, put a convenience store next to...
No, sir, no, sir. Convenience stores don't have any, um, development standards. They, they basically go in as a use by right.
So this is more stringent, this is tighter
Yes, sir, it is.
Than a convenience store, that's what I thought, so.
Yeah. And there again, with the thought of, of, of noise and that kind of thing, when it's abutting residential property, that's kind of why the, the board developed it this way.
You know, I'd still probably be more concerned about the decimal points
Sure.
than I would the setbacks, so, again, now y'all have to think that out loud. A convenience store that's open twenty-four, seven, could be next door with none of this, or an Event Center
Yeah.
would have to meet these requirements, so. Can't tell you who would be the worst neighbor, but...
What did, uh, we've talked about it before, uh, in some of those other things, uh, time that, you know, as far as
He's talking about hours.
Hours.
Hours of use.
Hours of use. I mean, for this one and honestly, all of them, because I know that's another thing that, that comes up that we hear, is, you know, they're still going at two o'clock in the morning, uh, you know, they're, they're going at eleven o'clock.
Yes.
You know, um, and I know we've talked about it, and it was brought up, that if it was mine, I, you know, I wouldn't want you shutting me down at this time, and, and this, this, and this, but especially in a residential area, I think that time is one, and, and, and even here in a commercial, you know, district, I, I think that personally that, that there should be a cutoff. They shouldn't be allowed to go, you know, three, four o'clock in the morning.
Sure.
Still, you know, can we do that in a commercial district? I don't think we can, uh, we can set hours on there as long as it's not a special use, can we?
Yeah, it, it would be difficult. Now, there is some language, Commissioner, um, uh, there is, there is some language, Commissioner, that speaks to noise in the special use section. Uh, hours of operation are be presented in the special use permit application shall be approved on a case-by-case basis. So, um, the applicant for the residential special use permit does have to...
I must've missed that one, yeah?
That's, yeah.
That was for the special use, so that's pretty much every time they have to do that.
I can look into, I can look into whether or not we can regulate that through the development standard process, be glad to do that, um...
Yeah, once you do that, and if, if the board would be okay, we'll just bring this back for a Thursday morning meeting, so.
Okay.
We can hash out this, does that sound good to y'all?
It's good to me.
Fine, uh-huh.
October third, that, that be okay?
Yeah, whenever, as long as Debbie's got, uh, room for it, that'd be great, and that way, maybe that'll give you time to do a little bit of research then on a couple of the other things, and...
Thank all of y'all for your input, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So, could we give a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to October third?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue discussion on the text amendments until October third.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I can sit, I can sit, we're good.
Right, okay. All right, moving on to the next one.
Next item is a request by Randall S. Thomas the second and Heather Thomas to rezone property located in God Grove Township, tax map thirty-four, a portion of lot nineteen containing approximately thirteen point oh-one acres more or less. Said property is located on the east side of Owen Road, approximately point five-five miles southwest of the NC Highway eight intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of CUHC, conditional use highway commercial zoning, and RA two, rural agricultural district, to that of CZHC, conditional zoning highway commercial district. This one, it's a lot of, lot of HC's and a lot of CU's and CZ's in this. This basically is dealing with an existing district back before, um, twenty-twenty, and the, um, adoption of one sixty D, we had conditional use zoning in the zoning ordinance. When one sixty D was adopted, that was made obsolete, and we had to move to conditional zoning, uh, for, for a multitude of purposes. The, right now, there's a district out there, and we have a lot of these old CU districts out there in the county that were approved. This district basically is outlined in, if you'll divert your attention, please, to the overhead, the area outlined in yellow is basically the existing CUHC district. That was done by Denzel Wright, uh, I think back in twenty-eleven. So, what that means is right now, that district has a, a list of conditions in it that are, uh, will allow for the property to be used for storage of building supplies, for pier construction, boat storage, soil storage, landscaping supplies, and equipment storage, as well as food pantry storage. Second condition says the property will also be used for boat repair and maintenance and a landscaping business. Third condition on the property, said storage yard will be fenced and screened as per the Davidson County zoning ordinance requirements of eight-foot fence with opaque screening. Fourth condition is the hours of operation will be as follows, business hours, deliveries in public access are seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. Owner access will be seven AM through nine PM, seven days a week. And then, condition five, minimal, minimal security lighting will be installed, and, and number six, Leyland Cypress planted along the north line of proposed lots seven and eight as per proposed plat. So that's what can take place at this property right now. The applicant is requesting to delete a few of these, change a few of these, to accommodate, uh, the property's been sold, Mr. Wright no longer owns the property, the applicant tonight, Mr. Thomas, now owns the property, he has a fence company, and he wants to operate the fencing company and have a, a small mechanic shop, so when the off-season, his fencing business is not, um, is not as busy, he can, he can do some repair and maintenance on, on equipment. So, the, what he proposes is to remove the condition, uh, of food pantry storage. Let me get to my papers here. He wants to remove the, uh, the food pantry storage, he would like to add fencing company and small mechanic shop to the list of permitted uses on the property. He would like to delete existing condition, uh, six that requires eight-foot chain link fence with screening by Leyland Cypress along lots seven and eight. Yeah, delete that. So, what, what that basically, and he would, he would like to add some area to this. Currently, you see this red line right here, this, this area right out here is currently zoned RA two, it's thirty-two hundredths of an acre. He wants to rezone that from RA two to CZHC, that's where he wants to have his fencing company operate from and have his mechanic shop, which is just out here off Owen Road, Southmont's, South, uh, Southmont School's just off the map here, you can actually see the edge of the property. This is the new county property for the park right here. Um, this is the new county property for the park right here. So Southmont's just off the map. Um, the, during the, the process, the planning board, uh, requested and Mr. Thomas agreed to two additional conditions of a thirty-foot buffer of existing trees will remain uncut and maintained along the southeast property line of this track, track nineteen on the map, uh, along these, these two property lines. Those are the old lots seven and eight from the original rezon where the Leyland Cypress were requested. Mr. Thomas made a lot of sense in that he didn't want to tear trees down to plant trees, so he agreed to keep thirty-foot buffer there. That's, that's the one thing. And then, um, he also agreed to some combination of, of opaque fencing and opaque vegetation shall be used to screen the proposed mechanic shop and fencing company area from view along Owen Road. I think staff supported this back in twenty-eleven because there was a need in the Southmont community with it growing like it was around the lake for boat storage and that, the, the services that were were going to be offered. And the, the allure to it was that it was off the road. It wasn't seen. All the storage was kind of going to be isolated. So that's, that's why staff supported it. Mr. Thomas is talking about ramping up a little bit of activity out here along Owen Road. That's why the planning board wanted to see some type of screening out there on the road to kind of, you know, uh, make it a little less noticeable.
That's right.
And, and I'll, I'll end my explanation at this point and allow you, Mr. Chairman, to, um, open up the public hearing and Mr. Thomas is in the audience.
Okay, I'm gonna declare the public hearing open. Mr. Thomas, if you'd work your way to the front, tell us about your plans. Hey, how are you this afternoon?
Good. Yes, my name is Scott Thomas.
Just tell us a little bit about what your plans are and what you, what you want to do. We heard it from him, but we'd like to hear it from you and.
Yeah, that's, that's the piece that's already zoned commercial. I actually own, I don't have a pointer with me, but I own all, I own this other piece, this other big track right here. It goes right up behind all these houses here. Uh, we're actually using that for a farm location. Um, so we, we own the piece in yellow. I own the lots up above, I own all those lots up to there. Uh, we just bought lot nineteen A to add in our farm. And then this big section here in the middle, right, we own all that too. That's what we actually, uh, we use that for agriculture use. We farm that. So the piece up here that I'm wanting to put in, the small piece right there that I'm wanting to get in with the, uh, commercial, I have a small shop there that we, it's, that's pre-existing. We built years ago to work on our agriculture equipment. So naturally, we just kind of parked some of our work trucks there. Uh, so that shop is there in place. I would just, since I'm trying to get all this fixed, I thought I'd just go ahead and put that in with the fence company also.
I guess you heard kind of what we're gonna do across the street.
Unfortunately, I sure did.
Okay.
I hope y'all keep all them buffers in place when y'all start doing that.
Uh, it'll be pretty buffered, yeah.
I hope it will.
Except for what's not buffered now, that's already, uh-
Yeah.
Done, so.
And I do a lot of work. I do a lot of work.
It could be that or, um, seven hundred houses over there, so.
I'd rather take y'all's parking, seven hundred houses, that's for sure. And see, that's the reason I bought all this, because Danny would, had planned on keeping the, the big lot and doing a business out of that. And he was gonna do, in this other part that I own, he was gonna do like twenty-something houses in there. So that's the reason I bought all that. And, uh, as land comes up, we're actually, I'm in process, we're in contact with, we're actually under uh, contract to buy this other square. Uh, we're lot six-three, thirty-six A is that piece and it comes all the way back out to Owen Road. We're under contract right now fixing by that. We're trying to add on to the farm. Um, there again, I've had a fence company for twenty-five plus years. Um, seventy-five percent of the work that we do is on High Rock Lake, on the Davidson County side and Rowan County side. That's us, that's where we do most of our fence work at. Um, so there again, the park, I know about the park. We do pretty much all the parks and recreation fencing for Thomas Marshman. We've been doing that for years, so, but, uh, that's kind of what we're wanting to do.
Any questions for Mr. Thomas? No? All right. Thank you very much. And, uh, we'll see if anybody else has got anything to say in favor or against this, uh, rezoning.
Hey, my name's Josh. I'm a resident on Owen Road as well.
Your last name, sir?
Busek.
Will you spell that for me?
B U S I C K.
Like it sounds, okay.
Um, received a, a letter in the mail. I was under the impression that, um, I guess it would be, um, eight-six would be, uh, rezoned conditional, uh, commercial highway as well. And, uh, um, am I wrong to suggest that?
Your, your track? Cause you, you live on eighty-six. No, sir. Um, statutes require that we send out adjoining property owner notices to anybody touching Mr. Thomas's property that's gonna be rezoned. That's why you received a letter. But it doesn't affect your property at all.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Crook, what's staff recommendation?
Staff, staff's gonna initially had some concern with this because of the increased activity on Owen Road. With the conditions that Mr. Thomas has submitted of, of opaque fencing and screening, blocking the view of his activities from Thomas Road, excuse me, from Owen Road. Um, and the rest of the conditions staying intact, staff is okay with, with the amendments and the new area. Um, the, the, so what that basically, that does include the planning board conditions of the thirty, of the thirty-foot buffer plus the opaque screening along Owen Road. And, uh, basically, he can almost do everything he wants to do with the conditions that are there now. He's just wanting to move the location out to, to Owen Road. He's gonna screen that so that it can't be seen from Owen Road, so, um, staff is okay with it. Um, we would recommend approval. Uh, policy statements, uh, from the land development plan, one-one, one-two, one-four, one-five, one-seven, one-eight, five-six, five-seven, and seven-four. I'll support the request. The, uh, the planning board voted to approve at five to zero with the amended conditions and we would ask you do the same and adopt a statement of consistency.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little bit confused. Lee, you keep saying the buffer from Owen Road?
Yes, sir.
Where does his property touch Owen Road yet?
It's all the way down the, well.
Right here, uh, Commissioner, that is where his property touches Owen Road for the commercial activity.
The map I've got, Owen Road's down below it.
Well, it turn-
Is that circle there? I mean, is it curved there? Okay. That, that clears it up right there.
We probably should have put a, another label up here on this part of it.
Okay.
Owen Road starts in Southmont up here and kind of comes around down to here.
Yeah, see.
I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner Shale, cause I was confused as well.
See, it's got dog patch or something road there. I can't see that, but I thought that continued on.
My apologies.
Okay, so do we have a motion, uh, to approve or deny? If you approve it?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second. The adoptive resolution, statement of consistency, motion and a second. Cast your vote. Maybe you got mine, Debbie. I don't know if you do or not.
Actually, all of the votes and the motions are in. And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
All right, it's been approved, sir. Thank you. Have a good afternoon, okay? Yeah. Seven E, rezoning request by Albert W. and Nancy K. Walser in Arcadia Township, two-point-one acres from RC to RA three.
We do have a request by Albert W. and Nancy K. Walser to rezone property in Arcadia Township, tax map nine, a portion of lot eighteen containing two-point-one acres more or less. Said property is located on north side of Frybridge Road, approximately one thousand thirty feet west of the Shady Oak Trail intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RC, rural commercial district, to that of RA three, rural agricultural district. Um, back in the seventies, the Walsters used to operate a, a vehicle maintenance facility right here in this RC. They no longer want to do that. They want to, uh, rezone it back to RA three. And, um, that's, I'll yield the floor to the, uh, to the Walsters.
Pretty plain and simple. I'll declare the public hearing open. Uh, Mr. and Ms. Walser, if y'all would like to come up. Sounds pretty simple what you wanting to do, but.
Uh, my name's Nancy Walser. We live at thirty-two eighty-six Frybridge Road in Clemens, Arcadia Township. Um, we've lived where we're at for like fifty-some years, fifty, fifty-five years, I guess it is, close to it. Uh, back in the seventies, uh, when all the cotton mills in Lexington shut down, my husband was out of work and he temporarily used our shop for remodeling car, fixing, doing bodywork on cars that had been wrecked. Uh, just as a temporary thing. In nineteen seventy-five, he was rehired by Hanes, went back to work and that shop hasn't been used for that since. Uh, I was down in Lexington a couple, about a year or so ago and realized that our property had been zoned right straight through the middle of our house. Uh, which we thought the house, the driveway and the driveway going out to the shop was what was rezoned. But as it turned out, they had actually rezoned back in through the middle of our house. So that's the reason we decided, uh, we didn't do anything with it prior to now because we had a son that we thought might want to open his eating and air business out there once we were gone. But he has since passed, so we know now that's not gonna happen. So, uh, we just see no reason to leave it the way it is and we just feel like that, uh, for our other son to inherit it, it'd be better for him to inherit it as one, all zoned as one commercial, I mean, one residential piece of property rather than commercial.
Right. All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much, ma'am. Have a good afternoon. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against this, uh, rezoning? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Staff would recommend approval, Mr. Chairman. It meets the, uh, Article seven of the zoning ordinance administration section. Policy six-one, six-five, six-ten, and seven-three support the request. Planning board voted to approve this, four to zero on the twentieth. We would ask the commission to do the same thing and adopt a statement of consistency, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this request rezoning and the statement of consistency. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, cast your vote, please.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
All right. Your motion passed, ma'am. Y'all have, y'all have a good afternoon, okay?
I'll get some language together on the event center and get it to you well before the, the third. I'll get it to Debbie so you guys can digest it and if you have any recommendations, please let us know.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate it. All right. Any additions to the consent agenda? Anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Didn't letting you take my vote this time, Debbie?
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
Okay. Proclamation, uh, Mr. Shale, I guess you got the first one, nine A.
Okay.
Proclamation, constitutional week of twenty-twenty-four. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law and whereas September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is feeling improper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial, memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations that will commemorate the occasion and whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities and whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as constitutional week. Now therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as constitutional week and urge all citizens of Davidson County to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves adopted this ninth day of September twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Chairman, I submit that as my motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote, please. I don't see this on, y'all see it online?
Yeah, you gotta slide all the way over and I'll start on one again.
I don't do those.
I got you. All the way over. Did you get yours, Mr. Shale? You got your vote in?
I've got, all the votes are in.
I forgot to enter my motion, Debbie.
I got it.
Did you?
Yeah, I got your vote, but I put your motion.
Okay, thank you.
And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
All right, you're cutting me off when this all the way over there, the other side. All right, we'll move on to item nine B, uh, Commissioner Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life veteran status. Whereas the residents of Davidson County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Davidson County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas there are approximately seven hundred thousand veterans in the state of North Carolina with over nine thousand of them being in Davidson County. And whereas veterans continuing to serve their community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, church groups, civil service, and whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the Davidson County Board of Commissioners appreciates the sacrifice our U, United States military personnel made while defending freedom and believes specific recognition be accorded them in appreciation of their service and to demonstrate the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for military service county. Davidson County hereby declares from November fourth, twenty-twenty-four through November eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observance of the, of Operation Green Light, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens in patriotic transition, tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who, whose immeasurable sacrifices help to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Adopted this ninth day of September twenty-twenty-four, and Mr. Chairman, that is my motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your vote, please.
I got everything. All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
Okay.
Y'all are rocking and rolling with this vote.
Commissioner Watford?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I told you we wasn't as stupid as we look.
That, no. You got, you got, going really well.
My proclamation tonight is the library card signup month for twenty-twenty-four. Whereas libraries play a crucial role in the education and development of children from story times for preschoolers to college and career planning for high schoolers, fostering literacy and a love of reading. And whereas libraries are welcoming and inclusive places for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another across cultural, ethnic, generational, and economic lines, strengthening the social fabric of the communities they serve. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas libraries help people of all ages navigate the complexities of life, providing access to research, information, and government services that allow everyone to lead more productive and fulfilling lives. And whereas libraries contribute to a strong local economy by providing access to the technology and training that are critical to the success of job seekers, entrepreneurs, and students. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. And whereas the shared resources libraries offer reduce the number of items households buy and dispose of, providing a simple way to save money, conserve resources, and reduce waste. And whereas the Davidson County Public Library checks out over a half a million items each year to almost a hundred thousand cardholders. And whereas a library card sparks creativity and empowers all people to explore new passions and interests and pursue a path of lifelong learning. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners proclaim September library card signup month in Davidson County and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today, adopted this ninth day of September, and I offer this as my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Watford. Do we have a second?
Second.
Cast your vote, please.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
Would you like to say something, Sheila?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your recognition of library card signup month this year and every year. We emphasize library cards during September in conjunction with the start of the school year to remind county families and students that having a library card is an important school supply and with that, they have access to a range of electronic and physical resources that can aid in research projects, aid in other homework assignments, and supply students and the whole family with reading material. And, and it's really important for children to keep reading for pleasure all year long through the school year, not just in the summer. Research tells us that the more children read or are read to, the more they effortlessly succeed at literacy skills like comprehension and grammar and spelling and other things. And we also know that reading fiction in particular helps a person develop empathy. And I'd also like to point out that your county public library this past fiscal year has seen increases in many of the things we measure. So in-person visits were up thirteen percent, circulation of print materials was up three-point-seven percent, electronic content usage was up twenty percent, ebook, ebook usage was up eight and a half percent, and e-audiobooks, and this, this is an enormous increase, is up ninety-six percent. That's nearly double than what it was the previous year. And so to give you numbers for that on the e-audiobooks, it went from fifty-four thousand circulation in twenty-two and twenty-three to a hundred-six thousand circulations in twenty-three and twenty-four. So this, I think goes to show that county citizens appreciate the public library and see the value in library resources and services. So, thank you again for your, the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think Ms. Watford, you gonna give that to her? Do you have the?
I do have that. I was just listening.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Casey, you gonna lead this next one off?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to, if I can, Mr. Chairman, do the next three items at kind of a thirty-thousand-foot view with two pieces of paper. And then if the board wants to talk to folks from Thomasville and Lexington, I'll let it, I'll let you have at them. Uh, the board Thursday morning meeting did hear Thomasville's presentation. We had a good discussion about these DPI need-based grants, but they're all three here for those same type of grants. So it's the same financial situation for all three. If that's what's the board's, uh, the information you're needing to make your decision for them apply for these grants, you may not need to have as much conversation. I'll let y'all decide that.
Mr. Chairman, can we make one, uh, to make a motion for each one of these items? But yeah, that's what I was gonna ask is if I could make one motion for all three items, but.
We, or we, I think we can go down through each one real quick and vote if that's where you are at the end of this, but let me, let me do my part of this. And then if you know, you wanna talk to them about any particulars of these things, you can. So gonna go back in time, these DPI grants, these need-based grants, I mean, we've applied for these before. Uh, all three of them have applied for these before. We have not received anything. I think we're looking at about two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars statewide, if I'm, is that right, Tim? Two-fifty? So it's a limited pot money that can go, you know, to a hundred counties. This stuff's largely gone out to the eastern side of the state for these first several rounds. Um, so they're back at, here again to apply, both city schools are looking to apply for brand-new high schools in both cities. And I'll get to that in just a second. And then the county schools have already done one piece where they've been before you on the twenty-sixth for a list of projects you saw where it was almost ten million dollars worth of projects and we have a match. We've got around two of that that's a smaller piece of paper. So let me start with the big one here for just a second. All right, so you guys know about this sheet because you've seen it before where it's basically our plan. And the folks who were here, uh, here Thursday morning meeting, they saw this as well, but I've kind of made some tweaks. So we've got our available balance in what we have available in county capital reserve. That's that first row, ninety-two-point-seven million. I'm starting at the top. And then every fiscal year thereafter, to fund this plan, when I say the plan, the project's right below that, and I'll get to the gray ones in a second. To fund these plans, remember inside that first row, I know that's a big number, thirty-two million, part, large part of that is the, is the, uh, what we'll call the sportsplex off Owens Road we just talked about. So remember, we've got ball fields, a multipurpose thing potentially go out there. So that's twenty of that thirty-two there. That's everything else, but these other, these other items are just listed individually for you to see. You know, new detention facility with some type of cash put down and as you can see with your eyes, some type of debt. You got three categories up there in the Carolina blue, county cash, state dollars, and debt. So there's only three sources that can fund these projects, right? And you got some state dollars that we're gonna be putting in on the public school, I mean, on the needs-based grant that the county schools applied for first round. Let's call that round one. They've already come to you on the twenty-sixth. You saw those projects, nine-point-three million dollars were to put up, one-point-four. The rest of the money comes from the state. So all of this is largely county cash, right? Most of it is coming to come from us. And so the gray areas there are, um, the, the one that was already approved on the twenty-sixth. And then, you know, the two city school systems have applied for these needs-based, need-based grants before and have not gotten them, but we all know there are some challenges at both sets of schools in both cities in terms of the high schools and the middle schools, particularly piping and some of those kinds of things. So in, a long time ago, in lieu of thinking, well, what if we never get the DPI grants? We've got to put some cash up to help assist with those schools. That's where you're getting those sixteen, seven-five-zero numbers there if you see with your eyes in the gray box. So putting some cash up, this plan, this is a plan, right? This is not set in stone. This board would have to approve, but this is a plan of what we could do with our cash. And it also lets you know how much cash we gotta have available to do it. So right now, we've got ninety-two million. As you can see, Tim's gonna have to put back three more fiscal years, and these timings of these things will have to be laid out over those three fiscal years. One of them, you see there, sewer expansion, SRU, big number, forty-nine-point-six million. You, I think we've talked about this, uh, lots of times in this boardroom about our desire to continue with what we've enhanced on with Thomasville going down sixty-four, but doing it on this side of the county over here with SRU and Salisbury for the west side opened up. That project's gonna take a little while to get off the ground, and I won't go into all this right now, this morning, but the sewer committee's heard this. There's gonna be even some political challenges with that project, um, that are gonna have to be worked out, and it's going to take time. So you can see that project's eaten up forty-nine-point-six million dollars of our, of our, what we got available, right? All right, so keep that in your mind as you move down. Go down to the bottom now. So, you know, we gotta have a hu, we got a hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars worth of projects. If Tim can save these next three rounds, he's got a hundred and, uh, or sorry, we've got a hundred-and-fifty million dollars worth of cash. The hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars of projects requires a hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars of cash, because the rest of it's borrowing for the jail, whatever we do with that, and then grant dollars for round one of Davidson County Schools need-based. Go down to the bottom. Davidson County Schools is here this evening with this sheet to do, that they, you know, they weren't here Thursday for a round two. I think I mentioned to the board then, uh, that they were probably gonna be coming back. So now you've got sixteen projects that total another fourteen and a half million dollars, largely HVACs, as you can see with your eyes, gym renovations, kitchen renovations, um, largely, uh, mostly HVACs, really. So there's a laundry list of projects that they would like to apply for that requires a fifteen percent match. Remember, this grant can go all the way up to sixty-two million for a high school, um, for, for getting a high school, for building a new high school. So you gotta come up with a fifteen percent match of sixty-two million. They're not nowhere anywhere close, obviously. So that shows up at the bottom down here in what I call DCS multiple projects round two. Same dollar amounts. I just transferred them from this sheet down here at the bottom so you can see it on one piece of paper. You've got the state dollars, the required match, and then right now, no additional dollars will be from us above that, above that fifteen percent. That's all it's gonna take to get it done. Move down with your eyes to Lexington and Thomasville. Big numbers here because you're talking about two brand-new schools, one at a thousand-person capacity, one at, I think, seven-hundred, if I'm not cro, if I'm not mistaken. So Thomasville's at the seven-hundred, Lexington's at the thousand. Um, sixty-two million dollars in state grants for both of those, should you get them awarded. Um, and then the fifteen percent is the nine-point-three. We would have to go above and beyond that to get two new schools. So we're gonna have to chip in another twenty-eight million dollars. What does that mean? You're borrowing against the SRU project, basically. Does that make sense? A project that is going to be future-oriented anyway. So if we were to get these things and you take your eyes all the way to the bottom, I mean, it requires just under forty-nine million dollars in cash to get all four of them, really. You get two new high schools, this list of projects, and then DCS's first round of projects that they bought. So think about it. You would get all those things for forty-nine million dollars. It is thir, just under fourteen million more than the plan called for. Does that make sense? We were all, we, I'm not saying we were going to do it, but I mean, we were looking at putting up sixteen-point-seven for each school. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
We gotta go another thirteen and beyond that. So the question before the board, if you wanna entertain talking to them about the particulars of that, again, I'll let you have at them, but it just requires another fourteen above what our plan was already calling for, to get two new high schools, a laundry list of stuff with the county schools, and then a first round of stuff with the county schools.
Well, I would say the odds of us getting all three of these grants is probably, I'll keep my fingers crossed, but it's long to know, it's, uh...
It's gonna be tough, especially, you're asking the state to give you, um, one hundred and, about forty-five million of two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars worth of grants. So you basically be asking for half of it.
Yep. I'll keep my fingers crossed, but.
I never got a Christmas present unless I told them what I wanted for Christmas.
That's true. That's true.
Right.
Unless there's anything else, I move to, on the first one.
Ms., Ms. Shale, one quick question, because I asked the board to give me a little time on these rebates and things. I do wanna address that. Move your eyes all the way over to the far right-hand column that says other and it's yellow. The school systems themselves in Thomasville and Lexington will bo, all, both be putting up dollars to help make this happen to the tune of just about, just under eight million dollars. That's lottery funds and that's nutrition funds from their district. Um, Thomasville has one-point-one available from an, uh, uh, CTE building project that we gave, you know, several years ago. They've not moved on it because as I described to the board, that's the building where the ROTC folks are in now, where you're piping old steam from another building just to heat it. I mean, and the pipes and air conditions are in the ceiling. They're kinda gone bad. So there's a sinkhole right outside the building out, right out, located right outside the building. So they've held on to that one-point-one, one million. That's included in these numbers. There were other rebates for mechanical efficiencies, um, paving of the parking lot through DOT. In other words, you, you know, that would be part of this that you could ask DOT for a rebate on. And then there will be sales tax dollars that'll come back to these projects. Um, and I spoke with the folks, uh, thank you for talking with me last week. And I had to do this quickly from Friday. I'm just not comfortable yet budgeting those things. Does that make sense? I'm not comfortable that we're gonna maybe, I don't know exactly what we're gonna get and I didn't have enough time to analyze it. So what you're seeing is the full, uh, potential impact. Let's say Commissioner, uh, Chairman Yates is right. I, I think it's probably you're asking the state for half their dollars. That's very gonna be li, low probability. But should you get lucky enough to do it on either one of those two projects, we would have to come back and make some adjustments to the budgets for these things, for sales tax and some, because I will go after these rebates. But I'm not, I don't, I don't feel comfortable telling you slam duck, oh, yeah, we're gonna get them. Does that make sense? So this plan's fully loaded responsibility for us. Does that make sense? And if we get it, I will work on the geotext, uh, rebates. I will obviously get sales tax rebates. We can put that back in the general fund, and I'll go to DOT for any pavings of any parking lots. But I didn't wanna include that now and set you up for, oh, there's another three or four million dollars that I'm, a hundred percent I'm gonna get, and then it's not a hundred percent that it's three million dollars. It may be less or something. It may be more. I don't know.
Well, here, if we get it, we'll get really, really serious about trying to find out where the money.
Very serious, correct, because it could be millions of re, millions of dollars worth of rebates that I can go after.
Yeah, this is an application request here.
Correct.
You know, if it comes through, it comes through. If it doesn't come through, then we decide what we need to do from that point on.
That's right.
So.
We'll figure out a way to try to make it happen if it happens, but.
I'll take the first one, Mr. Chairman, if it's, if, for, looking to it, uh, for Lexington City Schools permission to apply and, uh, approve their request.
All right, we have a motion. Any other questions? Second?
Second.
All right. Cast your vote, please.
I know Dr. Hardy's here. She may wanna say something to the board. Um... I'd also like the fact that Dr. Hardy's color-coordinated the school colors. I noticed that this morning.
Great day to be a yellow jacket.
And her shirts, blue and orange. I noticed that this morning.
We got Louie Phillips back there, too.
Oh, deck that, Louie.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Smith and Chairman Yates. I just would like to say thank you so much on behalf of our board, our board chair, Mr. Wall, and our vice chair's here, Dr. Phillips. Um, we appreciate your support and we hope to put forth a competitive grant. And we wanna take all the state's money because Davidson County, Lexington City, and Thomasville City, we deserve the best for our children.
I'd like to take it. Keep your fingers crossed. All right. You got your votes, Debbie?
Yes, sir, I did. And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the next one, the Davidson County School Systems, and I make a motion that we approve their, uh, application.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Cast your vote, please.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
And I'll, I'll take the next one, the Thomasville City Schools, um, motion to approve for their capital fund.
Have a motion and a second. Cast your vote, please.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, while, while the vote's coming in, Casey or anybody that wants to answer this, do we know why? That they're, the state is denying them so much? I mean, do we?
At just a limited amount of money, probably inundated with, with, because you gotta think about it, new high schools, eighty million dollars.
But you said the majority of the money is going to the east coast?
It largely has gone to these, these mo, let's just be honest, poor counties out east. It largely has gone to these, these mo- let's just be honest, poor counties out east.
Okay.
And so, they've, they've really dove in on those hard. Now, I'm, I'm thinking they'll move more inward now, um, to the triad area. So, we may stand a shot for some of this stuff, I don't know.
Those east ca- those eastern counties are the most powerfully connected, too. Those people been in the office forever, down there.
Well, good luck to all of you.
Mr. Chairman, I got all of the votes, and that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
Alright, that motion carries, so keep your fingers crossed, maybe we'll, um...
Thank y'all.
Maybe we'll get lucky. Okay. Let's see, what we got?
You can have this one, I folded it, but you can have it.
We've got extras over here.
I don't need mine, I, I got that stuff memorized, you can throw it. Okay. Hand that over to me, show me they wanna get that sign.
Motion to the Planning Board and Board of Adjustments.
Well, no, I don't think, I printed yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a carryover item from the, uh, August twelfth meeting, where we need an alternate for the Planning Board and alternate for the Board of Adjustment. Uh, so, I'm bringing it back before you guys to, um... Unless the board wants to carry this forward again.
And while y'all saying that, I just wanna let y'all know, um, some of y'all may know him. Clark Brown asked me the other day that he'd be willing to serve on a board, and he served on the Solid Waste Advisory Board like clockwork, that I hardly ever make a meeting to. Uh, so, I just thought I'd throw that name out there. I like Clark, and he does, he's very thorough with, with the stuff he does on the Solid Waste Advisory, but anyhow, um...
Has he got an application, Kim?
He, he don't have an application, but he already serves on the Solid Waste Advisory Board, and most of y'all know him, and... And this is an alternate position, I think, anyhow, so...
Be an alternate for the Planning Board, and then, another alternate for the Board of Adjustments.
So, I don't think he really cares, he just likes to serve, so... I don't think he really cares where, where we put him, but I...
Isn't the Board of Adjustment harder to get some people to work on?
It's, it's a lot more difficult.
Yes.
Because of what they have to do to make the decision.
If he, if he's okay, that's, since that one's harder to get.
I mean, I'm sure he's okay with that one, I just, he asked me the other day, and he's asked me before about serving on some boards, and like I say, I know he's faithful to the Solid Waste Advisory. He's there when nobody else is, you know?
Or are you recommending, uh, or you say that he would make it alternate, or...
Uh, I mean, we're looking for alternates, so...
Both of them are alternates.
Both of them are alternates.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, yeah, whichever one, uh, Board of Adjustments, I mean, I'm sure he'd be right there. I feel like he would, so...
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we would appoint Clark Brown to the Board of Adjustments. Isn't that what you just said?
Can you all talk about both of them and do them as one motion?
Okay.
And that's second.
They, they wanna do it all in one motion, so if we do it...
Or move on to the next one.
Do y'all know some of these on this list?
What, uh, Scott, who were the two that we put on the Planning Committee?
Who were the two that you had placed on the list of applicants we had? I'm trying to remember, and I just can't remember.
But Mr. Schoeff on the Planning.
Yeah, Dennis Schoeff was the, the one person that you placed on the, uh, Planning Board, and Rebecca Brown went to the Board of Adjustment. Those were the two that you handled back in August.
Okay, so, now, you're looking for two other than those two?
That's correct, and you've asked for Mr. Brown to be on the Board of Adjustments, so we're asking for an alternate, a second alternate for the Planning Board.
Uh, well, one thing I liked, uh, Christian Jones has been here, lives here forty years, and, uh, I think she'd probably be a good person to fill in that spot.
That was one of the applicants, I'm good with that one.
And I will amend my motion to ma- to, uh, Christian Jones for the Planning Board, and Clark Brown for the Board of Adjustments, as alternates.
Any other questions from the board? No good, Mike?
That's second, then.
Another motion and a second. Cast your vote. What's the time on the Board of Adjustment meetings, you know?
The, it's six o'clock on th- uh, the third Thursday of every month.
Third Thursday.
Everything happens on Thursday, Tony.
Were you the second on this one?
I thought I hit her.
Okay, it, it didn't come through, but I'll talk to you.
Every month, right?
Yes, sir.
What time, four o'clock?
Six, six o'clock in this room.
Alright.
All of the votes are in.
Thank you.
And that motion carries by a vote of five-zero.
Alright.
Motion for closed session.
Have a second for closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Good.